All right, good morning, everybody. We're going to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April 14th, at 10:00 a.m. If you would please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. No, you're good, Stephanie. Not a worry.
That six-second delay.
So, moving into public comment, we are again encouraging citizens to call in through our telephone number here. As of yet, we do not have any guests with us. We do have our IT, or I should say, our C-I-R-O, Chad Joyce on the line, but he's just making sure everything's coming through loud and clear. But if we have any guests, we'll always offer the opportunity for them to offer comments via the phone. But seeing no one here for public comment, we're going to move to consider the meeting minutes from Tuesday, April 7th. Would be a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Going into the COVID-19 planning in response, we'll turn things over to Margaret for these items.
The first item for discussion this morning is related to a communication that came to county commissioners on Saturday from the Pennsylvania Department of Health Secretary, Dr. Rachel Levine. And in that correspondence, she shared that the Department of Health will be providing information county by county about individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19 and asked for counties to identify a singular point of contact in each county so that that data can be uploaded into our 911 systems and then be relayed to emergency responders as appropriate. She outlined a two-step process. The first step was for the county to identify a point of contact, which Commissioner Pipe did on Saturday. The second part of the process is for the Board of Commissioners to look at a non-disclosure agreement. Our solicitor is currently reviewing that agreement and has made a couple of observations about what we might need to do in addition to that non-disclosure agreement, should you opt to sign that today. And we need to probably have some discussion about how we communicate with this information and put some safeguards around it. It is confidential, and we may want to consider looking at some non-disclosure statements, not only with our 911 dispatch team, but also with first responders across the region. So, that's what this is about.
So, in counties where there exists a county health department, this data has been available since the beginning of the COVID-19 epidemic and pandemic, and so they've been able to utilize this data to inform their first responders and individuals of importance in the community about the whereabouts of these individuals, especially if a EMS worker is going into a home and they will have a added safety, sort of a guide, when entering in the home if they know it is a home where there is somebody who has a COVID-19 positive case. However, we need to make sure that data is very, very well-guarded and only given to the right individuals. So, the way that the NDC, the non-disclosure and confidentiality agreement is situated at this point is it puts a lot of onus on the county. And the concern with that is that we will have dispatchers, individuals who listen to these public frequencies or have these radios that can get these frequencies, and all responders across the county will have them. Some people can buy them as well. And in addition, you're going to have the individuals that are then entering into the homes with this data, the police, fire, EMS. And so, we've got to be mindful about a few things. The three things that Margaret alluded to would be making sure that our dispatchers have an NDA in place, so they are aware of this because of the highly sensitive nature. Also, when communicating this publicly, we'd have to get a creative way of how do we put this out there without releasing the information of the individuals in the home? And then, lastly and thirdly, would be, how do we make sure that our first responders have that NDA signed and understood as well? And so, it's a challenge. We started the ball rolling by identifying that point of contact, which would be Dale Neff, our 911 director, because he'd be taking that data and putting it into the computer dispatch. But we had it on the agenda for further discussion because everybody wants to keep first responders safe now more than ever. We've got to be very thoughtful about how we get that data out to them. So, open it up for a little bit more discussion. We can maybe get some consensus on if we would agree to the NDA, what other safeguards we'd have in place. So, open it up for discussion.
Do you want to start, Margaret? Sure. I definitely think we should run this by the solicitor because we don't want to have a situation where one of our own staff inadvertently releases this information to the general public. But I also think that we should write something up for all of the various emergency responders in the county. Have them sign it as well, to have them understand that this is important information for them, but it's also important information that we don't want to disclose to the public. You just can't tell how people are going to react during a pandemic.
Yeah, I agree. I think the two issues here, obviously, is confidentiality and the safety of the first responders. But I think a simple non-disc... We're being asked to sign a non-disclosure, which we are really not... It really isn't a not-disclosure. It's a protected disclosure. So, we have to make sure that the folks that we give that information to understand the gravity of that information and sign a similar document, so we are legally and ethically covered, so.
I think with those safeguards in place, I agree. I think there's consensus on those points. I think if we are able to execute this in a way that, again, gives the confidentiality, protects our first responders, we can do so. It's not a one or the other. It's we can do them both in tandem. So, as it stands right now, we have, through the signature portal that DCD has, the contract or the NDA waiting for our signature. So, we could always look to approve it contingent upon those three items, in terms of the protected way of getting the communication out, and the NDA from both the dispatchers, individuals within our 911 office, and also those first responders. Now, it's easier said than done. There's going to be some challenges about getting everybody on board with that. We now stretch thin fire and EMS folks are right now. So, is there... Can we take an action to approve it today contingent upon those, or do we want those actions to be in place before we take any action on them? Is there any thoughts on that?
I think it gets you both... Either way, it gets you to the same place. We won't put the system in place until we have all the other elements in place, so I think we're fine.
I think in the ideal situation is everybody signs, and then the information is protected. I think everybody will, but it's such a changing situation. The... We have 70 today. Hopefully, that doesn't increase at all, but if it does, this may be more of an issue. And so, just, again, it keeps everybody safe and keeps everybody physically safe, but also the information of the individual safe as well. So, the way that we have it here is just an agreement with the Department of Health, but we could look for a motion to approve the NDC with the Department of Health contingent upon the actions we mentioned before.
Let me get those down.
Sure, sure.
So, one is NDAs with staff?
911 and dispatchers, I believe, yeah.
And the second one was NDAs from the first responders?
Correct, yeah.
And what was the third one?
Sure, the third one would be a way, a means of communicating it to the first responders. Because you can get many pages. You can download an app for it and listen to the pages that go out, and so this would be a way to... How do you communicate with them without putting that over the airwaves, so to say?
All right. So, I will make the motion to approve the NDC with the Pennsylvania Department of Health contingent upon having NDAs with 911 staff and dispatchers, NDAs with first responding organizations, and a means of communicating which households or addresses would have potential for COVID-19 without making it obvious to the general listening public.
With the approval of our solicitor.
And, number four, with the approval of our solicitor.
I will second that.
Seconded, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Questions? Okay. Yeah, please, please.
... potential conflict with federal...
... with the attorney and attorney general. Potential conflict in releasing information.
So, the way we understand it is it's just the addresses that are going to be given to us. We're not going to receive any names. However, if you have some one person living in a residence, it's pretty clear who that is. So, we've got to be very sensitive about that. And, you know, EMS folks from across, fire, everybody has been asking for better data. We're getting it now. We have the opportunity to, but there are certain consignacies we've got to get in place. But, yeah, it's HIPAA, it's confidentiality, it's, you know, stigmatizing somebody who's got COVID-19. Somebody might be recovered, you know, their last day of recovery, and all of a sudden people think that they might be day one of it. So, yeah, so absolutely, it's a confidentiality. Okay. Hearing no further questions in the room or on the phone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, the motion is carried. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda would be a contract with our coroner's office.
Yes, so actually, we have two contracts for you to consider this morning. One is a contract between the county and the Dean Wetzler Funeral Home in Milesburg and the Wetzler Funeral Home in Belfont. And the reason for the contracts is that the coroner has shared with us that he is not permitted to take any deceased bodies with any suspect of COVID-19 exposure into the Mount Nittany Medical Center morgue to hold while testing is being done. So, these two local funeral homes have refrigeration units and are willing to hold the bodies for the coroner's office, and we would be providing them, these funeral homes, $100 a day to hold the bodies. So, that's it.
We first want to thank both of the entities, family-run and operated homes here in our community. The coroner has a great relationship with all of our funeral home directors across the county and does a great job every day. He was planning on offering comments today, but actually needed to be redirected to an incident, I'll say. But he does great work, and this is literally just over the weekend identifying this need. And we understand where Mount Nittany is coming from, but in the same realm, we need to compensate these funeral homes for their ability to do this. So, contract's pretty basic, but it just, again, holds or gives us, releases us from liability and puts it on them. So, in terms of the timing of this, we, you know, again, this was Sunday, I want to say, two days ago, Margaret. We have the contract. Do we know if the funeral homes have seen it yet, just because it's so brand-new? And if not, it's okay, but...
I do not know if they have seen the contracts. I do know that our solicitor has reviewed both of them, and actually, she wrote these so that we would have the provisions in writing to give to them, so.
And, yeah, essentially, we drafted it, you know, she drafted it in a good amount of time.
It's verbal agreement so far between the coroner and the funeral homes, and the price was discussed, but not the actual document itself.
So, this would, again, it would put us in good position and make sure that we're all understanding what this would amount to. So, again, we can approve it. We can approve it with the ability for the solicitor to negotiate it back and forth with the two funeral homes, whatever our, you know, thoughts are on that.
Should we just approve the contract?
We can, absolutely, yeah, we can, yeah.
It's obviously contingent upon their approval anyway.
Yes, absolutely.
That would work.
Okay, sure.
So, motion to approve the contract for storage of remains of individuals suspected of having COVID-19 at the two local funeral homes.
I will second that.
That's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions on this? Okay. Hearing and seeing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. So, for our next item, we wanted to pause and reflect a little bit on the financial nature of where the county is at, and also applaud the incredible work that has been done by our center county government team over the past month, and share our views a little bit about what the next weeks to come look like. So, in early March, the county government COVID-19 planning team formed to prepare our response to the 2019 coronavirus, novel coronavirus, and it still holds discussions and updates virtually. Exactly one month ago today, the Board of Commissioners signed a county-wide declaration of disaster emergency to address the pandemic. On Monday, March 16th, to protect the public and our team, we began to reduce the amount of employees throughout our many county government buildings. In a matter of weeks, two weeks to be exact, we had dramatically reduced the number of employees in the Willabang Courthouse, Courthouse Annex, Temple Court, and Summit Park. Our employees, department heads, and elected officials have done and continue to do a phenomenal job in practicing social distancing and helping to keep each other and the public healthy and safe. Two days later, on Wednesday, March 18th, we urged residents not to visit county government buildings and instead conduct business over the phone and email. That same day, President Judge West issued a declaration of judicial emergency to keep the courthouse and the center county criminal justice system healthy and safe. Just 16 days ago, on Saturday, March 28th, Governor Wolf and Health Secretary Levine expanded the stay-at-home order to center county to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In light of the county being added to the stay-at-home order, we further reduced the number of employees in county government buildings. As I mentioned, four weeks ago, we began to reduce the amount of employees in our county buildings in order to protect themselves and others. Many employees have been able to work from home through virtual methods or by traveling to provide services to an individual in the community by pulling out of their driveway at home rather than departing from their office. However, due to the need to reduce the amount of staff in county buildings, some of our employees are unable to work from home. They have a reduced amount of work, or there is no work for them. Out of fairness to our taxpayers and in order to be good stewards, in my opinion, we have the difficult and heart-wrenching decision of how to move forward. Over the past four weeks, we have been having constant conversations with elected officials and department heads regarding their level of staffing and their resource needs regarding continuity of operations. Recently, we asked them to provide us their suggestions for furlough or partial reduction of hours for the employees in their respective offices. They each performed this weighty task with humility and the understanding of the direct effects that would have on each of their teams. And we, as the Board of Commissioners, also reviewed the personnel that comprises the departments we have jurisdiction over, consulted with the leaders of each entity, and came up with a list of positions and people who serve in those positions for furlough or partial reduction of hours. So, here are the details of the proposal before us. It would constitute a total of 100 positions affected, spanning 31 departments, 63 employees temporarily furloughed, 20 employees with a partial reduction in hours, and 17 positions that are soon or will be soon left vacant and would be unfilled unless a critical need arises. This would be effective at the close of business on Friday, April 17th. Specific portions of county government not included in this proposal are the coroner, central booking at the county correctional facility, the corrections officers at the correctional facility, drug and DUI court, elections, dispatchers in 911 emergency communications, emergency management, financial management, risk management, and also the human service departments of adult services, aging, children and youth services, drug and alcohol, mental health, intellectual disabilities, early intervention, and veterans affairs. For court and court-related employees, in consultation with the president judge, the temporary furloughs and partial reduction in hours will last until at least Friday, May 1st, two weeks from today, from this Friday. For non-court-related offices, the furloughs and partial reduction in hours will last until at least Friday, May 15th, four weeks from this Friday. All affected employees would still receive their paychecks on Friday, April 17th. All affected employees will be paid for their time work this week on May 1st, as already scheduled. For all employees, the county will continue to cover their healthcare benefits as currently enrolled. They will be required to pay their portion of the premium, and we will bill them for their portion, with the first payment being due in June or as arrangements as necessary. All employees are encouraged to apply for Pennsylvania's unemployment compensation. In addition to the PA unemployment compensation benefits, they will also receive an additional $600 per week in federal pandemic unemployment compensation, FPUC, on top of the regular benefits. With an important note that the FPUC is only available until July of 2020, the end of July. Also, all employees would be rehired without going through the normal application process. Through the next several weeks, we will be reassessing the resumption of functions on a department-by-department basis. We do many things here in county government. Each of our offices work differently than the other, while taking into consideration guidance from federal and state offices about continued efforts to mitigate the spread of the virus. We will weigh many factors regarding when to end furloughs, which are some of the following: the number of and rate of increases of positive cases in center county, the number of and rate of deaths due to COVID-19 in center county, the rescinding of Governor Tom Wolf and Secretary Dr. Rachel Levine's stay-at-home order, the extension of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, and also our president judge's order to close courts, changes in federal, state, and/or local revenue, increased need, and most importantly, this is going to be guiding us as well, is the increased need in staffing and service provisions in our offices and departments. The timeline for reopening the national economy and Pennsylvania economy will not be made in this room. However, we recognize there has not been a coherent strategy articulated by either Washington or Harrisburg about what that will look like. Yesterday, President Trump did announce his opening our country council with the plan to reopen the economy by early May. Also yesterday, a multi-state council consisting of many states surrounding Pennsylvania and Pennsylvania announced plans to develop a, quote, "fully-integrated regional framework to gradually lift the state's stay-at-home order while minimizing the risk of increased spread of the virus," unquote. We eagerly await what both the federal and state-level groups advise to local communities. What we do know for sure is that we need to prepare for revenue reductions from the state and potentially here locally, and from the state that is our largest source of operational revenue. The independent fiscal office estimated that over the next 15 months, revenues could be 2.7 to 3.9 billion short of expectations, depending on how long the business shutdown lasts. The IFO projects roughly 1.5 billion of that impact could occur before the state closes its current fiscal books on June 30th. Center County would not be alone in approving temporary furloughs and partial reduction in hours. The counties of Armstrong, Berks, Blair, Butler, Carvin, Clinton, Crawford, Dolphin, Franklin, Huntington, Lawrence, Northumberland, Perry Union, Washington, Westmoreland, and York have, in previous days and weeks in total, approved similar measures with unfortunately more to follow. And those furloughs and partial reduction in hours are 2,000 employees across those organizations, roughly about 100 for each organization, some as small as five, some as large as 500. Larger counties, you'll notice, are not in that list. They have been shielded from such measures with the inclusion of a provision in the $2.2 trillion federal stimulus bill specifically for counties with populations of half a million or more. Smaller counties may receive funding, but we are still awaiting guidance and clarification from the federal government. Regardless of the answer we receive, we must start planning for this year's budget and the future financial stability of center county government. I began with a recap of the actions taken by center county government dating back to early March to combat the spread of COVID-19. If we remember, just a few weeks ago before that, we had approved the amended 2020 county budget. On that day, Tuesday, February 11th, there were 12 reported cases of COVID-19 in the United States, 12. As of yesterday, there were 554,849 reported cases. On that day, we had a packed room full of department heads, guests, and members of the media. We approved the amended budget, received a presentation from McClure on the guarantee energy savings project, we ratified the RACP for Energy Titan Plant, and many more. No masks, no social distancing, no 10% limit, no tape on the floor to mark the changes of chairs spaced six feet apart. So much has changed, but we've done it to save lives, to buy time for our first responders, our frontline healthcare workers, and to buy more time to get personal protective equipment, to buy more time for tests, to buy more time. When we approved our amended 2020 county budget, we added additional positions for our Office of Aging and Elections. If department heads come to us with how they can pay for it and the need, rarely have we said no. We also recognized the hard work and dedication of all of our county employees and included a 2% increase in their salaries. We've always known and always will believe that our employees are our most important asset, and that's what makes this decision so difficult. We are carving out a portion of our most precious resource and asking them to be apart from us for some time to buy time... from us for some time, to buy time. There's a difference between lack of work and lack of initiative. We have abundant inventiveness, creativity, and resourcefulness, not just only in our organization, but in the individuals in the private, nonprofit, and public sectors here in Center County. This community wants to work. We've consistently had one or if not the lowest unemployment rates in the state. We, as commissioners, are tasked as chief executives and financial officers of county government to be mindful of the constant balance of revenues and expenditures and be accountable for the long-term health instability of our taxpayers' government. We must also realize more clearly than ever the amount of effort that goes into making our county government run by reviewing the list and the names of the people who are part of this proposal. We realize the profound effect and understand that these furloughs and the reduction of hours will have a great effect on not only the employees listed herein, but also their families. Having to tell your family, your friends, and the process of loss of employment, be it temporary, within yourself, can take a heavy toll. As we consider this action, we do it knowing the burden that places on our employees and recommit our full energy into working with everyone in the full scope of our country, Commonwealth, and county community to get through this and bring our county family back together. Offer the floor up to our fellow commissioners.
Well, I think we're a little premature in this, Michael. For a number of reasons, the courts have, have got themselves basically shut down until the end of the month. I would have, I would have liked to have waited until the beginning of May. That would coincide with what other folks in the community are doing. I feel very strongly that when we look at the, the impact that this is going to have on our organization, I look at it from three different, three different levels. First of all, you're right, it is going to have a financial impact on our employees. It's going to have a psychological impact on the whole organization. But most importantly, and what I like to think of, I, I've spent 17 years in this job, working to, for a rainy day fund for just this occasion. This, it, it's raining, and I really do believe that this is premature. I would have liked to have waited until the beginning of May to not only measure what, what impact it has on our employees, but I want to look at a global, I want to have a global conversation about our expenses, our allocations to outside organizations. You know, Spring Board's one of them. I, 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 I'll take Spring Board, I'll take a few of the other organizations and look at those and go, you know what? It's time to really scale back on all of what, what I consider county government expenses. I would have liked to have had that. My biggest concern is this occurred over the Easter weekend. You, you directed staff and yourself to go out and talk to department heads and the electeds to get names, I, I would think, under combat conditions on a, on a Easter weekend. I would have liked to have a more thorough conversation with them, bring in the courts. And one of the other things that really has me a little bit concerned, and I really didn't even think about this until yesterday, we had our conversation, I didn't even understand it, was the court has given us two weeks. We've given our, our controlled areas four weeks of, of layoffs. I, I really struggle with, with the concept that we have two different measures of parity in, in our organization. I think we could have had a conversation to, to figure out how we do this moving forward if it was necessary after the beginning of May. We have the resources to do this. I'm mindful of the fact that the taxpayers are paying these people, but I'm also mindful of the fact that we have a responsibility to our employees to treat them fairly. A lot of them are not in county government because this is the most lucrative gig they could get. They're here because of security, of the fact that, you know, that they have a responsibility to our community. And ironically, the folks that are least impacted by this are the folks that you're talking about having, having probably the biggest impact next year in, in the governor's budget. If you want to look at it this way, the human services are the ones we most rely on. We are not touching very many of the human service folks in this, in this conversation. I struggle with that. I, there's a whole myriad of things that I have just been weighing over. I don't think any of us have been sleeping well. We've all been exhausted. I think our, not, not only our administration, but our department heads are exhausted, and I think we need to take a little bit more time to look at the impact, impacts, both intentional and unintentional, and the consequences of those impacts as we move forward. I don't disagree that everything that you said is correct, but I do believe that we need to be a little more mindful time-wise, and I do believe the beginning of May would be a better time for us to have this conversation. Plus, and most importantly, I think we owe, we owe a little more time to our, to our employees to prepare for the layoff process. And I think that's where we should have been talking about today, saying at the beginning of May, if things don't turn around, if there isn't a, a change in, in direction, both at the state and national level, we're going to have to take drastic action. I think taking that drastic action today is premature.
Fair enough. So in terms of outside of the meetings we've held, what kind of research or things have you been looking at on this?
I've, I've been looking at every bit of data I can, and nobody has a magic, has a magic eight ball for this. Everybody has to, has to make their own decisions. But what I will tell you is, I'm looking at other organizations, and I'm looking at the court. I know that the court's going to be shut down until the end of April. On April 29th, they go back into place. We gotta, we gotta hire all those people back, and they've only been furloughed for two weeks. That, that doesn't make sense to me. I think we are in a position where we can afford to, to keep our, our staff intact, and I think it makes sense for us to, to move forward after that, that tipping point.
No, let me ask it a different way. In terms of you, we, you have the budget, you can suggest these changes. Have you done that? Would you like to suggest any today? Other than the Spring Board, I appreciate that, but...
Well, I, I don't think, I, I don't think this is the time or the place for, for, for that conversation. We're, we're focused on our employees at this point. If you want to have that conversation, we can go get our budgets and knock that all out. But to me, yes, I have looked at the budget, and I have looked at what I would consider relevant things to, to deal with, but most importantly, we have the resources to maintain county operations for two weeks, and that would be to the end of the month. It looks like we're going to jettison 100 employees. That has a lot of impact to our organization, and I don't take it lightly. I've always worked in this organization thinking that the most valuable component that we have are our employees. So that's where I am.
Okay, and I appreciate that. I, I, I look at the four weeks that some of our employees have not had work or have had reduced hours, and I look at that as the time when we were generous and when we helped them to transition from working in a normal atmosphere to working at home without any work. So I see that. So I, I guess the difference between, at least from the two of us, would be, I'm talking about a four-week amount of time that we've been assisting them, and you're going for six weeks, and I, I appreciate that.
Well, it's a little bit more than that, because I think at some point, we should have told them what was coming. I don't think we gave them much primer to say. I think most of our employees probably thought this was going to go on for a little bit longer yet, and this morning, they're finding out that they're laid off. And I, I, that's just not how I consider fair treatment. I, that's just where I'm at, and I, I've expressed it to you both, you know, before, and I think this is one of the larger issues that we will deal with as commissioners, and I've never jettisoned 100 employees before. And I take that very seriously, and I take the, the consequences of that even more seriously. So that's kind of where I'm at, so...
Would you commit to us of sharing a list of other things that you think that you could, you could cut?
Yeah, I can come up with one, yeah, sure.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Yep, might take me a little while to, to generate that, but I will certainly do that. But I think we need to do it as a group, and again, we need to look at what impacts that has as well, because if you start cutting some of those things too extensively, it may have detrimental, you know, consequences. But we have to look at all of them.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So I've, I've been down this road many times before in the private sector, many times. At this point, I mean, our staff is our greatest asset, we appreciate all the hard work and dedication that they have put in place sometimes for decades, and we are committed to seeing them return, which is why we're furloughing them, and we'll be paying their healthcare. There are thousands of employees here in Center County who work from the private sector who no longer have jobs and no longer have healthcare. I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Center County. At this point, we are aware of at least 17 counties that have announced furloughs, reductions of hours, and layoffs, totaling over 2,000 employees, averaging about 100 or so per county. Of these 100 positions, 17 of them are currently vacant. Several dozen more employees are actually going to be on part-time hours. Let's see, the, due to the nature of their jobs, 60-some employees can do little or no work from home. As Commissioner Pike mentioned, we have been covering their salaries here for almost, well, by the time we hit the end of the week, for four weeks. Based on the fact that Center County, like most employers, does delay payment, staff people are going to be receiving a check, I think it's a week and a half from now, for two weeks' pay, and then two weeks following that, they will be receiving a check for an additional one week of pay. Hopefully, shortly after that, they'll be receiving the regular unemployment insurance, the additional $600 a week from the CARES Act, and their $1,200 stimulus payment. Now, Steve is mentioning waiting two more weeks, but telling the employees beforehand that we're considering large layoffs. Again, I've been in this situation many times. I think it would actually be more stressful for county employees to be waiting two weeks, or longer, two and a half weeks, to find out whether they're going to be laid off or not. I, I think in some ways, it, it's more fair and from a mental health standpoint, easier to handle, to say, okay, I know things aren't good, all right, I've been told here on Tuesday, I am going to be one of the people who's on a part-time reduction of hours, or I'll be furloughed, now I know, instead of having it hanging over their head for two and a half weeks. In terms of scaling back Spring Board, I think Spring Board is emblematic of a much larger issue we're going to have here in the county, and that's support for our local businesses. They are being decimated, and I think the county needs to take the lead in assisting our local small businesses, not backpedaling and leaving them to their fate. So as we have additional meetings, I'm going to be pushing for additional funding to assist our local businesses to help keep them open, because if we don't do something and do something soon, we are going to be thousands of small businesses short in this county. It will decimate us, it will change our culture. We need to support our small businesses, not backpedal away from them. Also, we have been working on this for about roughly a week. We've been in communication with every single affected department head. We've worked with every single elected official. We've worked closely with the court system, and practically every case, at least in the back of their mind, they knew that something like this was going to need to happen in the near future. So appreciate everyone's hard work, we appreciate county staff, we appreciate their years and decades of dedication, and we hope, we're committed to seeing, seeing them return. Thanks.
Well, now that we've talked about leadership, I'm going to propose something. I am willing to give up my salary for the month of May, both, both pay periods. I will give up my, my deposited check, if you will, from, and I would suggest we look at leadership the whole way around and figure out how we can provide that leadership here from the front. I think we need to lead from the front, I think we need to be thoughtful about what we're asking our employees to do, and I think we best do that by showing that we ourselves are willing to sacrifice.
Sure, I appreciate that, appreciate that, Steve.
Through conversations with many elected officials, some were willing to basically say that in terms of their, in terms of their offices, they would rather see their pay decrease personally rather than to see their employees cut, and in some circumstances, that'll be happening behind the scenes, but I, I'm also willing to make a, a contribution back to the general fund, a portion of, a portion of my salary, absolutely, absolutely willing to do that, and, yeah.
I'd, I'd be willing to do the same, but I would recommend that some of these funds would be used to come up with a program to assist our small businesses here in the county.
I would prefer that that money go back into the general fund to, to function what we are tasked here to do in Center County, which is provide human services and other, other services for our communities, so...
Well, I think we can have that, that conversation further, but yes, I think we're all committed to returning a portion of our salary back to the general fund, and, and we can do that in the days to come. I think that would be absolutely appropriate, do that, absolutely. Okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
So we have this proposal in front of us, and again, it was, we held executive sessions over the last several days to, to see the names, to look at them, and again, I, I listed some of the offices that weren't affected, but, but we have many departments that would be. So we have this in front of us, this proposal. Would there be any further discussion or questions on this?
What is the...
Yeah, please.
The impact on the county budget, this proposal? In terms of how much money are you...
Sure, it's, it's roughly $85,000 a week in, in, in the current proposal. So over a two-week timeframe, that would be $170,000.
What's the county reserve fund right now?
True, true. Pool cash is about $16 million.
That's, well, the pool, but you want to look at the unreserved, the, we're going to get an audit, unreserved, I'm sorry, the unallocated unreserved fund as of the last audit was about 9.3 million. It, it, we, we think it's going to increase about to 9.6, but...
Although as of today, if we had to write a check, it'd be for $7,400,000.
Okay, in response to Steve's...
Yes, absolutely.
Why don't we use some of that, why doesn't the county use $700,000?
Sure, so we have been. For the last four weeks, we've been taking care of employees, doing just that. Some counties, when we looked at them, were not paying their healthcare at a certain date. In addition, they were doing a, a complete layoff. So again, not giving them healthcare, not laying them off. So again, I think the difference is a four-week plan versus a six-week plan, and I've seen enough data and appreciate the, where the virus is heading. Again, we talked about over two months, it's gone from 12 cases to over half a million. And so we understand where, where that's headed to. So I, I would label the fund as, as a rainy day fund, not a pandemic fund. We don't have a pandemic fund. One of the things that we are committed to doing is, day in and day out, holding meetings. So I hope that in addition to, that we're available eight hours a day. Can we make that, that a...
I'm, I'm available anytime you need me, even beyond.
Okay, well, eight hours a day, we're going to be working on this, Monday through Friday. It's not going to be a Tuesday, Thursday, we come here for an hour or two, we're going to be, we're going to be here, working on this, so...
Not here, somewhere else. We, I don't, and it goes back to the conversation about social distancing and being smart about that, but we will be working on it.
On the phone or video conferencing, but, so, yeah, the way I view it, Gary, is we are, we are in total uncertainty about federal dollars, state dollars, any of our local dollars here. And for the last four weeks, we've used that, that, that unreserved fund to be able to take care of our employees who weren't working or didn't have work or reduced hours, and I've seen it personally, I've seen enough where I can say, now would be the time at the end of this week, we're still going to pay them for this week, still going to give them another four days of pay, and again, this is through no fault of their own. But we need to, we, we, so over that period, that's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars we've used for them to draw down that, that unreserved fund, but we're going to have to have more guidance from the state on their budget, federal government on assistance from the stimulus, and then again, we're committed to bringing everybody back, and also redoubling our efforts, looking at more paid leave, more, looking at more ways that we can train our employees, doing other things that help them to know that they're appreciated here. So we have to redouble our efforts in that front.
But it's also important to remember that we have not seen any cuts on our funding streams at this point. The budgeted numbers that we're working off of and the budgeted amount of, of money for our employees is what's, for the most part, going to come in, and what small amount is not going to come in, that's what I think the, again, the, the undesignated fund is, is to be used for.
So maybe to put this in perspective, we had $170,000 budgeted for our hotel fund. It was about $4 million that was going to come in to us, we take an administrative fee, send the rest back to the tourism bureau. It's likely that might be 15,000, 20,000, with all the events that are going to be cut. So right there in that timeframe, that, that, that would be revenue that we're not experiencing. So in that circumstance, we're dipping into the, the unreserved fund in that regard. I, I think none of us is going to say that we're going to get more money from the state coming into this next fiscal year. I don't think we can commit to that. So again, I, I, I think one of the things that we know is, maybe it's, I'll put a variation on it, but disagreeing between friends is the hardest thing to do. You sometimes have to say no to people, and this is just, I think, a circumstance where we're saying no to that, we're saying no to the, the continuing to go on, that's the hardest thing. So it's a hard decision, we appreciate... So it's a hard decision, we appreciate that, and one of the things in the letter that is gonna be going out to all employees, it'll, I'm signing it, and it'll have my cellphone number and my email address on it. So if any employees would wanna, that have been affected by this, would wanna call me, email me, and talk about why we made this decision, I will, I'll be taking every call, answering any email, listening to their stories, and making sure to let them know that our goal is to bring them back into the fold in the future.
In addition to the budget, Gary, there's a broad variety of small fees that the county charges over the course of a year. That adds up to significant monies, some of which we keep, some of which we pass on to the state, and then the state returns a portion of those funds to us. We're also expecting to see a pretty significant drop in the fee revenue as well.
Terminology, is it just straight furloughed and laid off, or is it...
Yes. A layoff would essentially be a complete separation from employment. It's basically, you know, done. A furlough is with, and this is a temporary furlough, with the expectation that they're gonna be returning to work, and that their work hours could increase. So, and again, we're still paying for their health care, so they're still gonna be having that, so there's a, there's a relationship and a connection with the county government still, their, their employer.
It almost sounds like a mixed message. You're saying this is two weeks for some, hopefully, but they can apply for unemployment.
That's correct.
So, I mean, for the 63, what's your message to them directly, in terms of, do I wait two weeks and hold on, or better go ahead and get my unemployment form in?
Sure. In the letter, we state to them, and will state today, that we would encourage them to apply, because it's until at least that date. We're, we're waiting to see if the Pennsylvania Supreme Court would extend the order, and if President Judge West would also extend the order as well. So they would be encouraged to apply beginning on Su, this Sunday. That's the first week timeframe where they'd be seeing a reduction of hours, or lack of work is, is the technical term, but they would be seeing that next week, yeah.
Sheriff, any questions?
I, I just have one.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
To rehire, my heard you say rehire, we don't have to go through the process, they would just call them and can bring them back, right?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah.
Good. Thanks, Gary.
Absolutely. So with that, we have the proposal in front of us, so we, we'd look for a motion to approve it.
Motion to implement the proposed furloughs and reduction of hours for county staff effective this Friday.
I will second that. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further conversation on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, two votes to one. Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right, so we, we're gonna be, we do, sell some items, so Margaret will turn it back to you for a grant application.
This item is submitted on behalf of the correctional facility, and it's requesting approval to submit a grant application to PCCD. The application would allow the correctional facility to add up to 10 body cameras for correctional officers, and it will expand their capability to capture video and audio recordings of incidents that could occur on the facility property. They believe it is another way to enhance the security and safety of the correctional facility for all. The actual amount is estimated to be $14,400 in year one. Year two is $4,032 for an estimated project total of $18,432. If awarded, the grant will provide up to 50% reimbursement of this for a two-year period, July 1 of 20 through 2022.
Margaret, any questions from Margaret on the grant application? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion of, to approve submission of the grant application to PCCD.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. For our consent agenda, we have two items. Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried, and we have administrator's report. Margaret?
Okay. Earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners passed Resolution 2 of 2020, which authorized the administrator to execute financial documents such as purchase orders, invoices, reimbursement requests, not to exceed $10,000, and only in those circumstances where funding had been approved and allocated within our 2020 budget, or previously approved in public sessions. So in essence, this approval is a, a second approval of sorts, and in accordance with the resolution, I'm required to provide you quarterly with a list of the contracts that were approved, and in front of you is that list. There were 19 of them received between the 1st of January and March 30th. The majority of them are renewal contracts. There are a couple of them new, but the item was included in the 2020 budget. The largest amount was, let's see here, $7,619, and the smallest amount was a contract renewal for $300. So it's been the... That's it.
And again, this is just a report from Margaret. Did we have any questions from, for Margaret, I should say? Okay.
Thank you for saving us a lot of time.
Yeah, appreciate that.
All right. All right, so we will move down onto a report of judicial personnel items. We've combined our Tuesday and Thursday meetings to, just again, reduce the amount of time that we're, we're spending in the office. We have one item from probation, and it's that she's approved the personnel requisition for a full-time department clerk. Also, for the sheriff's office, the sheriff has approved the change in status for Gramaz Fazloo, from full-time security officer to an on-call occasional. Also, he's approved the personnel requisition for a full-time security officer. We've then moved to our check run. Is there a motion to, or I'm sorry, Mark, we'll turn it over to you.
So Center County's budget is roughly $83 million per year, which means we spend roughly $1.5 million a week. Our current check run this week's a little smaller than average. This week, we sent $34,783.80 to Community Services Group A for providing mental health services to a broad variety of Center County citizens for the month of March. We appreciate all that their staff has been doing, how they're coming to the office, how, you know, in a mobile delegate and mobile service way, they're even going out into the community and interacting face-to-face with Center County citizens. Very much appreciate what they've been doing. Like to make the motion to approve the check run dated April 9th.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. All right, seeing no voter registration report, anything else to add on that front, Commissioner?
There is no voter registration report this morning, but just remember that the, the primary election has been moved back to June 2nd, and all the ancillary discussions that we'll be having over the next few weeks, I'm sure will keep us very busy trying to get that organized and put into perspective again.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. We have no announcements. Margaret, any executive sessions to report?
Yes, I do have listed executive sessions to report. Last Tuesday, April 7th, the Board of Commissioners met an executive session from 10:52 to 11:04 regarding a legal contract issue, and then again, the same day from 11:45 to 12:45 on a personnel matter. On Friday, April 10th, from 2:15 to 5:40, again, on personnel matters, and on Monday, April 13th, from 4:10 in the afternoon to 6:05 PM, for a legal matter and personnel matters.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. We have the balance of our public meeting schedule. We have a bid proposal scheduled to be awarded on Tuesday, April 20th, and then we have the elections board, some dates there. Gary, any, any further questions?
Well, there, I've never had to prescreen all my questions with the sheriff. Will there be some kind of posting, not the names, with the positions that are impacted by this? Will it be that posted somewhere, publicly?
Yes, we can do that. Yes.
Have you heard from anybody in the Department of Corrections about plans to release state prison inmates? Anybody in the county in terms of better determination of prisons or...
Other than the press releases and the, anything that's available on the DOC's website, but we haven't made, been made aware of any of those internal conversations.
I believe it's one of the Allegheny County administrators. Some are pushing for the primary to be mail-in only. Have you folks taken any position on that, or any thoughts on that?
We have not. I think our, our pleasure was increased by the June 2nd date. I think moving it back five weeks was, was great. That was a great step, but we, we have not taken a position on that. We're encouraging, however, everybody to vote by mail, to take the time to apply for it and receive the ballot and send it back in, so we're, we're, I think that's a strong position we've taken, but none on all mail or, or anything like that.
We also have some logistic issues to deal with, particularly when it comes to the, the polling places. We wanna make sure that they're fully staffed and manned. I know recently in the, in the election in Wisconsin, that was a huge issue. We don't want that to be a huge issue come June 2nd. I think we have the time to prepare for that. Also, you know, we obviously have some issues with Penn State University we're gonna have to work through, because, you know, June 2nd's not on their timeline for, for general occupation, so we're gonna have to come up with a, with a few new suggestions there about how we're gonna address that, but to my fellow commissioner's point, I think mail-in makes sense right now, at, you know, particularly to those who, who are, who are most vulnerable, who don't wanna go out, but hopefully by June 2nd, we'll, we'll be looking at a different horizon and, and we'll have the opportunity to make sure that everybody who wants to cast a ballot will cast a ballot either in person or by mail.
Do you have to have a maintain a, a minimum reserve fund?
By law, no. There's a recommended level from the Gadsby, it's called, there's a recommended level, but, but there's no bylaw. I mean, there are some counties that have $0, and they're operating from tran to tran in terms of getting credit every year and paying a little bit of interest. That's just how they have to do it, 'cause their taxes don't roll in at a certain point. But no, there's no, there's no law, yeah.
Safe to say today's action is a work in progress?
In terms of how, what we, no, in terms of the action we took, it, it's, it's a final decision. Letters will be going out today in the mail to employees. Employees have been made aware that this discussion was going to be occurring, and we were gonna be considering it, and if they were or were not on, on the, the list for us to take action for. So it is now a, the decision has been made.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Sheriff?
Okay. All right, seeing no further questions.
Actually, there, there is one, one bit of, one ray of good news, and I think people should be aware, you know, the Department of Health has made it clear that there are no nursing homes in Center County that have been impacted by the virus, and we are, you know, knock on wood, and, and thank God that that's the case, because, you know, again, our most vulnerable citizens are in that, in those facilities, and the folks that are responsible for, for their care have done a yeoman's job of making sure that their safety is, is up front. So I wanna thank, thank them for all their hard work, as well as our first responders and, and telecommunications, and even the folks around the front lines at, at our convenience stores and other, other shopping that literally, you know, need, need to be there for us to survive through, through, through this pandemic, and I wanna thank all of them.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Any other final comments before we move to adjourn? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn at 10:58.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.